Good evening. Today is March the 9th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'll now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you in the audience who are here this evening and anyone who's happens to be watching us online. Director Connor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Director Alt, seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. First up this evening, we'll receive a report about Gideon Pond Elementary School and Harriet Bishop Elementary School from Ms. Salma Hussein and Mr. Ken Essay, principals, and some special guests. Thank you.
Good evening. Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I'm pleased to be here yet again, helping support our incredible principals and another installment of our school reports. So I'm happy to introduce Mr. Ken Essay at Harriet Bishop and Principal Salma Hussein Gideon Pond.
Board Chair, Directors, and Superintendent Dr. Battle, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to represent Harriet Bishop Elementary School, and I just want to say thank you for everything you do, for our students, for our families, and for our staff.
Good evening, Board Chair, Directors, and Superintendent Dr. Battle. My name is Salma Hussein. I am the proud principal of Gideon Pond Elementary. I really appreciate working for District 191, and I truly believe in the statements of each student, future-ready, community-strong. I'm excited to share our story of community, love, and connection, and I'm excited for you all to hear from three of our fifth graders this evening.
I love it. We're going to start you out tonight with a little video tribute called "This Is Us." It's a tribute to Gideon Pond, Harriet Bishop, and 191.
This is us.
Bienvenidos a Gideon Pond.
Welcome to Gideon Pond. This is us.
Bienvenida a Gideon Pond. Esta es nosotros.
Bienvenido a Gideon Pond. Esta es nosotros.
Bienvenidos a Gideon Pond. Esta es nosotros.
Welcome to Gideon Pond. This is us.
Safe.
Look at me.
Respectful, responsible, and safe.
Bienvenidos a Harriet Bishop.
Ahlanu Sahlan.
Bienvenu a Harriet Bishop.
Esta somos nosotros.
Incuatana Nacho.
Hey, Rahna.
This is us.
Esta somos nosotros.
Respectful.
Repetoso.
Responsible.
Engaged.
And safe.
Right now, I am going to invite our three incredible student leaders to the stage, and they will share with you their story and experience at Gideon Pond. All three of our students are graduating this year, and we are very going to miss them. But I welcome you to share your story. I'd love Mackenzie to start, Kari to go next, and then we will have Kennedy conclude.
Do I have a question?
It's on.
Oh. Hi, my name is Mackenzie Wagner. I didn't write a big, big old fancy speech, but I do have something to say. But I... I know most kids don't like school, but I love it. It's basically six years of my life. Here's reasons why. First, the teachers are awesome. Second, we include anyone and everyone. Last, but not least, our principal is the best. We are so lucky to have Mrs. Hussein. Even though I'm going to Nicollet next year, I hope she stays at Gideon Pond so all of the students have a great principal like her. For the final thing I'd like to say, it's... it is, I'd like you to think that GP means great place. That end. Done? I'm done?
My name's Kari Sponsor. I've been at Gideon Pond for six years, and I feel like Gideon Pond is a really good school. They're very diverse, and it's a really big, open community. And the teachers are just great. They really help you get through the problems, and the specialists, it's just, it's, you always really have a fun time when you're there. And it's kind of hard leaving elementary because you're not really going to be seeing your friends as much, but I really hope everyone else is going to have like a great time at Gideon Pond, and I hope that like, instead of like not wanting to go to school, you like want to go to school, and they will have a great time there.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Adon. I've been going to Gideon Pond for six years now. I started when I was five years old, and my kindergarten teacher was Miss Anderson. I remember that anytime I felt scared or homesick, she would always take my mind off it by making funny jokes so that I would laugh. My first grade teacher was Miss Granky. I remember that she had whiteboard tables, and she also gave us hot cocoa once. My second grade teacher was Miss Ambiel. I remember that we could read anywhere that we wanted to in her classroom, and we read a lot. In third grade, I had Miss Zucolo. I remember that we did fun projects, and we played group games at recess, like four square, as a class. In fourth grade, I had Mr. Gallus. I remember that he would take us outside sometimes with Miss Beninga, and we would play kickball. Mr. Gallus would play games in the classroom, and we could win candy. That was the best part. My current teacher is Miss Selby, and every day we do morning meeting. In morning being meeting, we do morning melody, we talk, share and greet, and play a game. Gideon Pond is a wonderful elementary, and I highly recommend attending here, especially if you are trying to enroll your kid into a school. And even though I'm excited to attend junior high next year, I know that I'll miss the staff at Gideon Pond. Lastly, I would like to give a shout out to my mom, dad, family, Dr. Belmont, Ms. Buchanan, and Principal Hussein for all helping me get to this point that I'm at today.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow, right there, but great job, students. And it's always just such a great reminder of why we all do what we do, as far as students and our families. Our goal tonight, as I sit beside Principal Hussein, is to honor the story of Harriet Bishop, honor the story of Gideon Pond, and the commitment of our district to ensure that each student, future-ready, and community-strong. We'll go through a little bit of Harriet Bishop's story, and then I'll shift over and Principal Hussein will talk through her story as well. Harriet Bishop is a school where all people are welcomed, included, and valued, and you will see that as you walk into our front door. It's a message that we want to make sure that each of our students that come through our door can be authentically themselves, and they leave nothing in the car, on the bus, in their homes. They get to show up, they get to be real, and they get to be celebrated. Family is at the center of everything that we do, and I often encourage folks, if you want to truly understand who and what Harriet Bishop Elementary School is, come at approximately 3:55 in the afternoon and hang out front. It's where our families wait for their students to come out of the building, and it's a celebration every day. And it's just something that's very special and something that's very unique. We're a multicultural community, and we are intentional in about celebrating the unique strengths of everybody that comes through our doors. And you'll hear this more later, but we pride ourselves on being a strength-based school. We believe that in too many places that we walk as humans, we walk into spaces where people see us with a deficit mindset. They see us for our weaknesses. At Harriet Bishop, we pride ourselves on seeing the strengths and building on those strengths. Dedicated, loving, and passionate staff. I often pinch myself when I show up to work, to get to work beside these hundred people each and every day. It's an absolute honor, and they inspire me and they inspire our students, and they inspire all of us to be our best selves every day. And I just, I want to celebrate, we are a building full of rich language. Currently at Harriet Bishop, there is 23 different home languages spoken. Within our building, 51% of our families speak English as a first language in their home. 49% of our families speak a language other than English, and it is absolutely beautiful.
So I am new to 191. I first learned about Gideon Pond Elementary five years ago. As I was watching TV, I found this incredible story of then-Principal Dr. Belmont and Hodafi. And when I saw that story about Gideon Pond and the work that was happening in the community, I knew I wanted to learn more. And I had the opportunity to connect with Dr. Belmont on Twitter and just ask him for informational interview, and that sparked an interest to just continue to learn about Gideon Pond. And then, a few years ago, I believe it was 2020, Qorsha Hassan made history, becoming Minnesota Teacher of the Year, and being from the Somali community, she became our Teacher of the Year, and she was a teacher at Gideon Pond Elementary. So I continued to learn about Gideon Pond, and last year, I learned about the opportunity that the principal position opened up, and I applied. And I applied because I know, I knew and I felt that the work that was happening in Gideon Pond aligned beautifully with what I stand for. I stand for community. I stand for love. I love young people. And Kennedy and Kari and Mackenzie, I want you to know that I, I love you all. And Kennedy, I will listen to you, and I will bring my kids to Gideon Pond next year because it really, really is a remarkable school. The staff at Gideon Pond Elementary have been there for a very, very long time, and they love the children, and they love to learn. They strive to be culturally affirming. They listen. When our parents come and they have concerns and they have questions, my staff make the time to listen. I've had plenty of experiences in other schools where people didn't make the time, and I am really honored that at Gideon Pond, we value our community. Gideon Pond Elementary is remarkable because of that community. Every single day, we have parents who volunteer at Gideon Pond. They volunteer to be subs. They volunteer to help out in the cafeteria. They throw the best community gathering events. Just this past Tuesday, we had an event at Skateville, and it was just so beautiful to see the community. It was so beautiful to see students who it was their first time learning to skate, and I remember one of our first graders who struggled, but she didn't give up because at Gideon Pond, we really believe in the PBIS framework. Every single month, we have a character trait, and in every single class, the students learn about that character trait, and they connect it to real life. And one of my favorite character traits is growth mindset. I really believe in authenticity. I believe in vulnerability. I believe in strength as well. Ken Essay is actually my mentor because I am a first-year principal, and Ken is a remarkable principal. And in my leadership, what I do in my community, the first assembly that we had, I wanted my students to get to know me. So I told them, "Your principal is working on public speaking," because public speaking is hard for me. And now it has turned into a little bit of a joke. At the beginning of every assembly, I asked the kids, "What is your principal working on?" And the answers always change, and one of my favorite answers was from a first grader who said, "You're working on not being embarrassed in front of people." I said, "Yeah, that's true." Being able to model for our kids that growth, we're all growing, and as your principal, I am human. I am growing. I am learning, and it's important for them to know that. In this, you see that Gideon Pond really is a multicultural community. We are so diverse, and our families embrace that diversity and choose Gideon Pond because of that diversity. Again, I come from a culture where we tell stories, so I have one more story that I want to share with you. One of my first experiences in getting to know the community was when a second grader had a birthday party, and our community park is always filled with families. And this young person had their birthday party at the park and invited several of her classmates, and the next day, we had young girls from different cultures all wearing henna because the birthday girl decided that she wanted to have all of her friends wear henna. So it was just so beautiful to see these beautiful young girls of different cultures and ethnicities embrace henna and show up to school, and it just really affirms what our school is about. We accept everybody, as my students said. We are all a team of encluders, our staff, our parents, our students. And lastly, I really want to give a shout out to Dr. Belmont and all the other principals that came before me because this work is intentional, and it is through the legacy of Dr. Belmont and Principal Buchanan and others who set this commitment to community, this commitment to acceptance, this commitment where everybody belongs and everybody is welcome for who they are, and there is room for everyone.
As we go through this, we will talk, these are things that happen in both of our buildings. These are really district initiatives, but we really wanted to make sure that we highlighted them, as these are two foundations for our building. I do kind of chuckle a little bit as Principal Hussein says that I am her mentor. I would say that we are in this together. I learn just as much from Principal Hussein as she would ever learn from myself, and I just want to thank the board and Dr. Belmont for finding this incredible leader to my left. As many of you know, being a leader and being a principal is really hard work. What makes it easier is great leaders that work alongside of you, and I think right now, I'm in between two of the best that really helped me do this work, so thank you both. So first thing on there, we're just going to go back and forth. Fostering strong relationships, it's the essence of Harriet Bishop, it's the essence of Gideon Pond, and it's the essence of Community Strong. As we talk about, yes, our primary goal is to meet the needs of students, but we do that through building partnerships with, with families, partnerships with our staff, and as Principal Hussein alluded to, our community just comes out in so many ways to support Harriet Bishop and to support our entire community.
Both of our schools really use data to track and assess student progress. We have dedicated staff who understand that data is one point of the story, so our teams are very interdisciplinary. Our staff are committed to understanding the whole story of the student. So a lot of times, we look at the data to track progress, to see if growth has happened, and then we also truly partner with families to allow them to understand what we're seeing and to be culturally responsive in the ways in which we offer support to ensure that our students are successful.
The next one, as we continue to evolve around our culturally responsive practices and our CPSS framework, we want to just acknowledge the majority of our staff is white. The majority of our students and our family, and our families that attend our schools, are BIPOC. We have to, as leaders, listen to our community. We have to continue to alter our lens to ensure that all of our families feel like these schools were built for them and that they can thrive in them.
Both of our schools are PBIS schools, and to the point of Principal Essay, we are very mindful of also striving to be culturally responsive. So what I recognize is that in every culture, there are strengths, in every culture, there are values, and we do our very best to ensure that whatever value that we're teaching, we're connecting it to our students' culture, because we do not want students to feel like their home culture is not valued, because their home culture is valued, and we're very lucky to have staff who are learning and committed to be culturally responsive.
Second step, as we talk about our social-emotional learning, our community has never been hurting more from that social-emotional lens than they are now as we come out of a pandemic and we prepare young people for a future. So it just sets up the framework to allow us to develop, yes, academically, but also that social-emotional component is such an important part of student learning.
We are very grateful to have leadership in CSA to support all of our teachers in implementing math expressions in all grade levels. As principal, I've had the privilege of going into classrooms and seeing students have joy as they work on math, and that is intentional and that is on purpose. So this is an opportunity for both Ken and I to really thank the CSA department for giving our staff the tools and confidence to implement math expressions with joy, and that joy is being passed on to our students.
As we talk about collaborative classroom and our literacy curriculum, it's constantly seeking ways. We know that literacy is the key to success for all students. How can we continue to get better at teaching literacy to ensure that each of our students can find success and to open doors for themselves?
Our district is really doing a great job of implementing standard response protocols through the "I love you guys." It's been really intentional in training our staff. It's been very intentional in building muscle memory. As a new principal, I have really valued the intentional district-level trainings that allows and prepares me to then be able to go back to my community and support my staff. And these trainings have really helped us put in and develop practices that keep our schools open to our community and also prepare our community to respond in the event that something happens. We have shared language, we have practices in place, and we have a response to keep everyone safe at both of our schools and in all of our schools in 191.
Principal Hussein and myself are both firm believers in restorative practices. We recognize that young people are going to make mistakes. That's part of the journey. It's part of the growth. We do not believe in punitive systems. We believe in restoring relationships. If there's a conflict between two humans, we sit down and we talk through that. Sometimes it might just be the students, sometimes it may be the students and the families, sometimes it may be the students and the families and the relatives, but we want to make sure that we're building relationships. That's where we solve potential conflict.
And lastly, in both of our leaderships, we really believe in partnering with our staff and partnering with community and parents and developing a mentor-mentee relationship, letting our community know that we are servant leaders. I especially love to tell the students at Gideon Pond that they are my boss, and it's pretty empowering because you're like, "You're the principal." I'm like, "I know, and you are my boss. You let me know what you need to be successful." And I know Principal Essay does that in his leadership. I had the privilege of visiting your school. I forgot your school. Harriet Bishop. And at Harriet Bishop- And at Harriet Bishop, I saw Principal Essay, his office is the conference room because he gave his office to one of the other staff to give them the space. And anytime that his school community needs to meet, he leaves the conference room for them to have that. So our leadership is very collaborative. It's relational. And through that, we're able to really impact change and hold space for our staff and have those courageous conversations because our kids deserve the best and we are able to offer the best when we can be reflective. So this is from me. Gideon Pond Elementary is a beautiful, beautiful school. One of the first things that I decided to bring are the Somali English affirmation cards. And doing my research and finding out that 40% of the students at Gideon Pond are Somali, it was important for me to bring affirmation cards that were both in English and Somali. I grew up in Minneapolis, and when I grew up in Minneapolis, I didn't have educators who championed the Somali language. So I grew up thinking that success was not for me. So I wanted to make sure that students at Gideon Pond knew that who they are makes them powerful and being multilingual is a superpower. So I am so lucky to have staff who have adapted this. If you come to Gideon Pond, which I hope you all will, I know Dr. Battle has and Chair Humm has as well, and the rest of you, you are invited to come. In around our school, we have these affirmation cards stuck. So that way, when students are walking the halls, they can see the affirmation card. It's on top of the mirrors and sometimes I just stand in the mirror and as I'm fixing my hijab, I just read the affirmation card to myself. So these affirmation cards really help build the confidence of our students. It helps our staff also practice their Somali. Our staff are incredible people and I know there is power in language. And I'm very lucky to work with staff who are committed to learning the language, learning the culture, and making sure that our classrooms are spaces where our students can see themselves and can take pride in who they are. The other thing that is on this slide is restorative practices. As Principal Essay said, we both strongly believe in restoration. We believe that schools are spaces where students can learn from their experiences. I especially believe that when students struggle, they need relationships. So each of our staff, we're gifted a restorative practices question card. And the beautiful thing is many of my staff were already asking these questions. So now they get to have the card and I carry it too. And when students have a hard time, which we expect they will, we bring them in and we have a conversation. And our goal is not to punish the student. It is really to understand what caused them to respond in this way with the intention of helping them grow and make a different choice in the future. So that has been a commitment and our staff have really taken this on as a practice. The last photo is one of our phenomenal teachers. All of the teachers and staff are phenomenal. And Ms. Treagle is very, very special. Ms. Treagle has started this beautiful practice and other teachers in our building do it too. Ms. Treagle does lunch bunch. So every day, she chooses to have extra time with her students. And this is a time that students look forward to. It's an opportunity for them to tell Ms. Treagle more of their stories. And it's been really awesome to see the joy and the connection and the community. And there are times that Ms. Treagle actually does a whole class lunch bunch as well. So everybody gets invited. All three of these really show how special Gideon Pond is, how everything we do at Gideon Pond is done with love and it really is done with intention. And we are also working really hard to ensure that all of our students see themselves. So while 40% of our students are Somali, we have other students from other cultures. So as the principal, I am committed to understanding and learning about the other cultures and making sure that they too get to see their cultures and their languages and their ways of being represented and celebrated at Gideon Pond Elementary.
Just a couple of things here real quickly that we are doing within Harriet Bishop, strength-based school. We do every staff member that comes into our building, we use Strength Finder and we utilize those in many ways. You will see posters posted throughout the building celebrating what makes each person great and allowing one another to support and lift up each other for their strengths. On the right-hand side, that's just something that we've implemented within our building. Speak Up is, it's a practice to ensure that hate, hurt, and racist language will not be tolerated within our building. It teaches staff, it teaches students, and it teaches families the language we will use if those incidents were to occur. We are firm believers that within our society, we are always going to have things that happen. It's our job to stand up and to speak up against those things. And so this is a system to ensure that that happens each and every day within our building. And I know some of the other buildings have talked about Hagerty. It is a foundational reading supplement that we utilized two years ago. And I just share this data with you because I think it's super powerful. You'll see 2021 fall to spring growth, 61% of our students would be measured as proficient. After just one year of using Hagerty, you will see that that number goes to 84.7%. Once again, setting our students up with the opportunity to be successful. If we can get them in pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade to understand the basic foundations of reading, we are really setting them on a path for extreme success. We are setting them on the path to do whatever it is that they want to do. And so I want to thank our board and our CISA department for partnering with Harriet Bishop and moving this forward in the best interest of students. And I just, like I said, I would like to end today by just saying thank you. Thank you to all of you for your leadership within our community. Thank you, Dr. Belmont, for your leadership. And thank you, my mentor, for your leadership. You inspire me every day.
We have a game of mentor ping pong, right? Thank you, Principal Essay, Principal Hussein, Kari, Mackenzie, Kennedy. I think a lot of what you heard is, was, so you didn't hear a lot about their impressive test scores, right? Mr. Essay mentioned a little bit at the end, and both schools have a legacy of that. And I would, I would put forth to the board that the reason was modeled there, that they really focus as leaders on the drivers that lead to the results of those test scores. And so does their teaching staff. And then the students and families embrace that culture. I just want to affirm to what Mr. Essay alluded to. If you go to Gideon Pond from 9:00 to 9:15 and then Harriet Bishop from 3:45 to 4 o'clock, it doesn't matter what happens in between. It's a good day. So that's the community they have. Thank you, Chair Hume. Send it back to you.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
Director Connor?
Excuse me. I just can't, you just have no idea how it warms my heart to hear you students and to hear you principals talk about your schools and how passionate you are with the teaching. I wish I could go back to school because I really, I did not have that when I was going to school. And the inclusion and, oh, it's just so heartwarming. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your dedication. It's really wonderful to hear.
Thank you. Director Werff?
Yes, thank you, Principal Essay and Principal Hussein. It's just a joy to hear about what's going on in our elementary schools. Makes me very proud, once again, to be a part of this school district and see all the amazing things that we're doing. And kudos to our fifth graders that came and spoke. I know Kari, she played basketball with my daughter last year. She's an amazing leader, so I know she's going to do great, as well as the other two. I'm sure they're going to do fabulous next year in middle school. And they have their support from Gideon Pond that, you know, pushed them to do that. So I believe that they'll be great. Just keep up the good work. I just, I love all the support that you guys give to our students. It's just very inspiring and I do want to come and visit both. I'm not, you're not my school assignments, but you make me want to come and visit you.
Please come and join us.
Yeah. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Others? Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Hume. So just a couple of comments, starting with our students. Thank you, all three. You did awesome. Public speaking is not easy and to step up and do this is just, you know, incredible leadership. I believe, you know, one of you mentioned that, you know, you're, well, you, many, both of you, a couple of you alluded to missing Gideon Pond next year and, you know, moving on to junior high. And the beautiful thing about moving on to middle school is you get to keep your friends and you get to find new ones. And there is a whole new world at middle school for you to enjoy. And I bet you that your principals would love to have you come back as mentors and leaders to be able to help. I mean, that's just, you know, something that I know I always appreciate with what's going on in our schools. And I just heard a lot of, you know, support for student agency between the two of you. And, you know, it just reminds me, I think, having taken a hiatus from the school reports over the last couple of years, it's just coming through loud and clear, all the work that is being done and tonight is, is no exception. All the work that is being done in our schools that is really pronounced and finessed and sophisticated in supporting our students, addressing the whole child, you know, Hagerty, you know, literacy, I mean, it's all important. And to follow through on, you know, as, as time goes on, it's just reassuring to hear how culturally affirming our schools are truly becoming. And the stories that you share, the data that you share, I mean, I love, I love data and I also love hearing the human stories because the two go so closely together. So thank you both very much. I always love this report, so glad to have you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody said what was in my mind. I specifically wanted to say the story that both of you shared warms my heart. I want to thank both of you, the students. It's just great to see the passion and the love that is being displayed. And I just want to say one thing, my brother, who is raising a young family here, not too far away from here, went to Gideon Pond. So I've known Gideon Pond for a long time. And our family has been here in Burnsville for, you know, a very long time and we love this community. And, you know, hearing those affirmation cards that you made, Principal Hussein, if he heard that tonight, he probably would have like light up. I mean, you know, he has a preschooler here already and, you know, it's just, just the path that our community has, you know, where it came from to where it is now and where it's going, you know, I'm very proud to call here home. So thank you, everybody.
Director Chester?
I figure we're all talking ourselves.
Looks like it.
No, thank you very much. And I appreciate, even though we, we value data and test scores, I love that, you didn't center it, your presentation on it because academics is far more than just test scores and success. And especially because success is really driven in what you're building, which is for each child to have a sense of belonging in your rooms. By having that relationship and restorative justice practice that you have is all centered on maintaining and continuing to cultivate and build relationship, which when a child has that with adults, peers, they are already set up for success academically. And so I really, really appreciate seeing that and hearing that from our students and from both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I will just also add on to what my colleagues have said and just thank you both for the incredible work that the two of you are doing and that the staff are doing at your schools. Dr. Belmont definitely knows this. I had three kids that went through Gideon Pond, so I always enjoy hearing about Gideon Pond. But also, what I've learned over the last couple of months of getting these presentations is how incredible all of the schools in our district are. You know, it's easy for me to default to the ones that my kids went to because I've had such positive experiences. But hearing, Principal Essay, hearing about all the other schools in the district over the last couple of months, it's really astounding how fortunate we are to have so many amazing students, staff, principals, teachers, everybody works so hard for our students. So thank you to you both. And I believe it was Kennedy that listed her teachers. My own son, when he went to Gideon Pond, also had Mr. Gallus and Ms. Selby when he was there. And when you were at Building On, Director Alt's comment, this is my last comment, about staying connected and if you want to stay connected once you move on. My middle son, who graduated from Burnsville High School last year, his entire senior year, he was, he volunteered one afternoon a week in Mrs. Odegaard's class at Gideon Pond. So there are opportunities for you to stay connected if you would like, even after you go to middle school and high school, for sure. So thank you, everyone, and we'll move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to receive a technology update from Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology. Welcome, Rachel.
That's a hard act to follow.
I was just thinking that.
Especially with some things that are a little on the more technical side of things. But I will, I will do my best. So good evening, Board Chair Hume, Board members, and Superintendent Battle. Tonight, I will share two items of my technology update. The first item concerns the trends that we are seeing around cybersecurity incidents in K-12 schools. The second item provides information and timeline regarding our telephone replacement project. So both kind of big topics and a lot of information that I'm going to share with you tonight. The landscape of security incidents aimed against K-12 schools has significantly increased in the past few years. If you look at the graph on the left, it's 2016, and on the right, it's 2021. In those five years, we've seen a substantial increase in the number of publicly known incidents. There's more variety in the attack methods that they are using and there is more severity in the attacks that we're seeing. These incidents impact district operations. They're costly to recover from, and unfortunately, they have long-term effects on districts and on individuals. Unfortunately, multiple local districts are currently working through the realities of such attacks. Federal and state awareness of and support for schools is beginning to develop. In October of 2021, President Biden signed the K-12 Cybersecurity Act, which requires CISA, that's the Federal Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, to both report on the risks that we're seeing in K-12 districts, as well as to develop recommendations and guidelines to help us address those risks. Those guidelines were released a few weeks ago, so just in January of 2023, through a report called Protecting Our Future: Partnering to Safeguard K-12 Organizations From Cybersecurity Threats. The three recommendations that were provided align to common security frameworks and emphasize the prioritization of high-risk and highly probable scenarios. While the report does shed additional light on the realities facing K-12 schools, unfortunately, at this time, there's no additional funding to help us support those recommendations. Technology directors across the country, myself included, are petitioning the FCC to include cybersecurity measures as part of E-Rate, which would allow us to tap into reimbursements. We are also working within Minnesota to leverage state agencies. And until other funding options are available, we continue to utilize our district resources to meet the quickly changing needs. In the CISA report, the three recommendations are then broken down into performance goals, which in cybersecurity are called controls. While it's impossible to completely eliminate security risks, these controls are actionable items that strengthen systems and processes to help us mitigate the risks. In the report, there are 37 controls, and those 37 controls fall under eight areas on the screen. The full set of CISA controls outside of this K-12 focus is actually 153 controls. The full set of CISA controls outside of this K-12 focus is actually 153 controls. As there are so many of them, a risk analysis is also used to evaluate which, which controls should be addressed first. Understanding the likelihood of an event happening combined with a severity, should that occur, helps guide our recommendations and our own work. And finally, the cybersecurity insurance landscape for K-12 schools is changing in conjunction with the increase in incidents, with each year requiring more controls in place to acquire insurance and for preferential rates and limits. A good example was last year when MFA or multi-factor authentication moved to the required list, so we would not have been able to get a cybersecurity insurance without MFA. We're also seeing increasing recommendations. The trend has been that key recommendations in one year then start to become requirements in subsequent years. Sharing these trends in cybersecurity is not what any of us would prefer to be discussing. We would prefer to stay focused on the great ways we're reaching our district's mission and vision for each of our students. Most of the cybersecurity work is appropriately done quietly and behind the scenes. Sharing the trends provides a big-picture perspective of why cybersecurity is a necessity and a critical component of our work. Now, shifting gears a little bit and moving on to an update on the telephone system. So, I'd like to just provide an update and, and information on the review of our current telephone system. Over the past few years, we've run into increasingly difficult elements of our existing telephone system and began last summer to identify the need to transition to a modern communication platform that better fits our district's needs. So, the current telephone system was installed in 2007 and has gone through a variety of patches and upgrades over the past 16 years. I, I put this image in on the right because it's very applicable to our spring. It's a picture of a pothole that's on a road with various patches that are put in place. Just as the roads in our community and our, in our state have been patched and temporarily repaired, our current telephone system has been patched and repaired as well. And just like the roads, eventually, the whole thing needs to be pulled up, a new foundation installed and new concrete or asphalt put in place. That is the position we are in with our telephone system. We have antiquated equipment with increasing problems that we cannot repair or replace and features that are requested by our staff and families that we cannot provide with the current system. Last summer, as we began investigating replacement options, and think about your own phone and the, kind of the trajectory, it's not just for talking anymore, there's so much more to it. That's true in a bigger system as well. And so, you'll see the, the term UCAS, which means Unified Communication as a Service. So, this is a software-based system that allows for ongoing updates and feature additions. A UCAS system provides a significant increase in functionality, including flexibility and efficiency, as we expand where and when we provide services and support. So, we, we currently have traveling staff that move between our buildings regularly. We have our virtual academy teachers who are working from home. Combine that with our e-learning days where most staff are working from home and having the benefits of a soft phone, that ability to have a phone connection without a hard phone sitting, like, sitting on your desk. And that soft phone can be used on district devices from any location and would provide uninterrupted access in these various situations. Additional features are possible with the UCAS system as well, including SMS or text messaging with translation capabilities that would help improve communication between staff and families, as well as options to connect our communication system with our directory information for efficiency. And finally, two laws have been passed in the past few years pertaining to E-911. Carrie's Law requires that phone systems do not require a nine before dialing 911. So, you can't pick up a phone and dial nine to get out and then 911. It has to be 911 directly. Carrie's Law also has a notification requirement in a multi-line telephone system, such as what we have in our district. Ray Baum's Act requires that there is a dispatchable location. And that idea of a dispatchable location is that when 911 is called, emergency personnel can go exactly to where that call was placed. So, that includes not just street address, but then also floor and sometimes down even to the room information. In November of 2022, we began a focused review of our potential, of potential UCAS systems and we talked with stakeholders to identify needs and wants. We created some user profiles of the different uses across the district and prioritized desired features based on that feedback. We also reviewed infrastructure needs and identified key integrations, such as with Synergy and then also our BOGAN, our intercom system. We identified a potential, a list of potential options that might meet our needs. We've just moved into Phase Two in February, where we consolidated our requirements for users, hardware, licensing and support. And we're now meeting with vendors and have asked them to showcase some specific scenarios that we're asking them to prove that their system can handle. This process will lead to a request for proposal where vendors will respond and will include detailed cost options and then a recommendation will be made to Dr. Battle at that time. I put in a couple scenarios here, just as an example, as a couple examples. And in the next two weeks, those potential vendors will demonstrate these capabilities. Taking a closer look, just an example as the, at the first scenario, we've identified and mentioned the, the ability to SMS or text message as a preferred way to communicate from families back to our staff and vice versa. The added feature of providing automated translation within those texts would also help reduce the language barriers between staff and families. This, these features would allow us to eliminate a current practice of using personal cellphones or alternative programs that are not managed by ISD 191. Each scenario that we have, and there's like, like I said, there's about 15 of them that we're asking vendors to, to showcase, focuses on identified ways that we can improve the user and customer experience. And the big question, right, how much does this cost? And it is a big question. The costs associated with the new system can be broken down into like three categories. The first category is new equipment, specifically physical telephones. Our current phones are proprietary to the outdated system and unfortunately cannot be reused. New phones will be part of the RFP process and we're going to choose ones that are not proprietary to any single vendor. The second cast, cost category will be one-time implementation and that will cover cost to install, configure, we have to address phone number migration, integration with our chosen systems and training. We have excellent in-house technicians, which will help to bring this cost down as much as possible, but there will be some items in this category that will be incorporated into the RFP to ensure we have an efficient implementation that meets our timing, needs and taps into additional expertise that we need in the project. The final cost category is ongoing licensing and support. Our current budget, it currently includes obviously telephone licensing and support, but I anticipate that this will increase with the new system. How much it increases will be dependent on the features we choose to utilize, as well as the number of users and devices that we have in the system. So, we, we are going to be doing reviews of our spaces to determine which spaces actually need physical phones. And then we will also be looking at the different roles within our district to identify the feature set that is needed for those roles. The support level package will also be determined to figure out what is the right fit for our district. Costs will be determined based on this prioritization of features and will be itemized during that RFP process in the upcoming months. So, we're a little bit early on knowing exactly what those costs will look like from the various vendors. There may be some features that we determine are too costly, or we may adjust roles to have access to, to advanced features. So, there's a lot of flexibility in how we move forward, once we do get the understanding of those costs. One example I want to explain kind of on, on costs is that we know that in integration with our BOGAN intercom system is required. All right, that's a part of our, our security measures and a basic functioning that we need to have in our district. However, we have a choice whether or not we're going to integrate with something like Synergy or Skyward for a directory system. Our current system does not have that functionality and we will have to make the determination if the benefits are worth those, those costs. Another example is that in our current system, all of our telephones are location-based, meaning that if you're in a specific classroom at, let's say, Hidden Valley Elementary School, that specific room location has a telephone number. In a UCAS system, we can determine if we also want individual users to have a user-based phone number as well. This soft phone would enable them to take that number with them across locations, including home, if they're a virtual, if they're a virtual academy teacher, again, to multiple buildings, if they're a traveling teacher, staff member, or potentially, depending on cost, all teachers for an e-learning day. The soft phone feature allows that call to run through their district laptop or Chromebook, no matter where they are physically located. There are multiple features that are part of the review designed to improve communication between our staff and our families. I mentioned earlier that we have heard many times from our cultural liaisons, from our social workers and from many teachers, that a majority of parents want to use SMS or text messaging as their primary way to communicate. Adding this capability and translation would increase connections and partnerships. Adding those feature also increased costs. Until we finalize licensing numbers and go through that RFP process, it's difficult to give accurate estimates. Any new telephone system will be more than our existing one. And each added feature we determine to be a value add will contribute to that cost. The device license will align closely to our existing costs with user license, sorry, the, the device license are going to align pretty close to our current costs. But then when we look at adding those user license and potentially some of these more advanced features, that's where we're going to see the increase. To offset some of this increase, we're also looking at removing items from our budget, such as Google Voice, which, which fills a void for our virtual academy teachers right now, so that they have a phone number for families to call, as well as looking at some district cellphones, which would be redundant capabilities, so we wouldn't need those anymore. Phase three of the project would be the installation, configuration, implementation and training of the new system. One element of a software solution is that we are in control of the customer experience and have more control over how and when features are pushed out. This would provide us with the ability to do a staged implementation if we determine that that is the right approach. And it also ensures that as new features are developed, they can be incorporated into the system without a full overhaul. Training will be adjusted based on user needs. We would have a core team, which will be mostly within the technology team that are supporting the system. Then we'll have our power users, who will be folks like our administrative assistants and other roles who answer calls, route calls and work more intensely on the phones. And finally, our general user group will be our largest group. For that group, we anticipate that we will handle a majority of the training in-house. Replacing our telephone system is a major project and it reaches into all facets of our district. It also is one of our most critical tools. We believe that moving to a modern system will improve our ability to connect and to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Director Wurbe.
So, can you just, I may, maybe missed this, but what was the timeframe as far as receiving the RFP proposals?
So, the RFP, we will finalize the RFP and send that out probably by the end of March. And then the RFP process would be, you know, it would be open for 28 days and we would go through the fall. So, we'd be looking at probably early May.
Okay. Thank you.
Other, Director Alt.
Thank you Chair Hume. Thank you, Rachel. It's a big undertaking, I'm sure, for you and your team and appreciate everything that you all are doing. You know, we talk about the safety of our students being our top priority and this speaks to that, right? Security for students, their data, staff, their data and the district's data as a whole. So, you know, it's a 16-year-old system and might be high time that we, that we update it. Particularly hearing that it's a software-based system kind of adds that flexibility that, that you had discussed, which is reassuring here because it's, okay, well, you know, if it does need an update, you know, it'll just happen seamlessly, less disruption hopefully for, for staff and, and families. One thing I would, you know, when all of this is all said and done, I'm hearing that there could possibly be savings as well on translation services that we're using. That, that might be an interesting piece of information to bring back, just, you know, yes, it's, the system is going to cost more, but what are some of those other offset? You know, where did we land with the credit offsets to kind of help reduce the price tag? And I'm hearing you correctly that basically it, where there are district phones, we would no longer need them because the, the software would flow through other devices? Is that?
It would be a combination. So, we would still have phones in most of our, all of our classrooms and most of those common spaces. That's a, a security requirement that we want to make sure that is in place. Where we have the flexibility is that we could also offer those user license that would allow folks to have additional features and pull that soft phone concept as a concept that you're not using a desk or a classroom phone, that you can do it through your device.
So, then any kind of staff cellphone, for example, like a district cellphone, we would no longer need those?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get, move through all of our cellphones, but I think we will be able to reduce the number of cellphones, yeah.
Fair enough. And, yeah. That was it. Thank you very much.
Other comments or questions? All right, I just had two, I guess. One, if I'm hearing you correctly, we don't currently have soft phone capabilities in our, like, you said that some, some are using Google Voice, like VA teachers, for example.
Yeah. The only soft phone type opportunity that we have right now is through Google Voice and those are very limited numbers, so, yeah.
Okay. And then my other question, you, you mentioned a couple of things that could impact families, the preferences for receiving texts, for example. So, I'd like to know a little bit more about what, kind of what the process has been for gathering input from teachers or from families as far as what, what features might be most helpful for them or what features maybe they aren't, aren't as necessary.
Sure. Yeah, in Phase One, we reached out to a variety of folks across the district in many different roles and went through a series of questions trying to, including observation on how they're using the, the current phone system right now, what was critical that needed to stay in place. So, when we were at the high school, we looked at some of the, that was where a lot of the BOGAN, the intercom pieces came in, as front office staff were showing us kind of their day and how they, how they would use the phone in different ways. And then the things we really talked about, the things that, that, that they might have heard about, that are out there that could potentially be a part of the system and shared some of the things, right? It's always a little bit like, sometimes we don't know what we don't know either. And so, it's kind of a, a conversation about if this feature was available, would that be something that would be a value add to your position, your role, make it more efficient, make it more consistent, those types of things. So, those, we created about, I want to say there were eight profiles. And the profiles, then we landed on kind of how people would use the system and really trying to look at the approach that we're taking from a user, a user perspective instead of just the feature list. Because I'm in tech, I like the feature list, I like all of that, but it's really about how people are interacting with the system.
Right.
To make connections, to use language services, to be able to connect with families that may have had to go through a very different process before.
Great. Thank you very much. And if there are no other comments, then we'll let you go. And thank you so much for the work that you're doing and for staying ahead. I, I know Minneapolis Public Schools were just in the news this week for a data breach. So, thank you for all the work you and your team are doing to try and stay ahead of the bad actors that we all know are out there, unfortunately.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll receive a report about fundraising from Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I am bringing to you a report on fundraising per Policy 511 that relates to student fundraising that requires a report twice a year. Just to let you know, we did run a report for, from the e-commerce system from September 1st, 2022 through January 31st of 2023. This is in addition to the monthly reports that are provided for donations that the board recognizes each month. And below is the table recognizing the different fundraising events, the activity, the type of fundraisers, timing, purpose and the results. I'm not going to read through each of the things on the table and after that is just kind of a recap of the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, are there comments or questions? All right. If not... If not, thank you for your reports, Stacy. And next up, we have a report from Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Hume and members of the board. I mentioned in my report last month that February was I Love to Read Month, and our schools once again did a wonderful job celebrating literacy with fun activities that engage students, family, and the community. Sky Oaks, for instance, had more than 350 family members attend their breakfast with a book. Event and Harriet Bishop students read enough books to stretch four times around the world, as Ken Sae shared when I attended their celebration last week. I was fortunate enough to be invited to read in a few classrooms, including Jennifer McCarthy's kindergarten class at Ron Elementary. It was an honor and incredibly fun experience. There's something extra special about our kindergarteners. But it got even better when I received a packet of thank you notes from Mrs. McCarthy's students. They arrived last week, handwritten notes. And of course, it was very sweet, and I loved the sentiments they shared, such as, "I love your voice," "It was cool," "It was good." "Thank you for reading to us, we loved the book." "I liked when you read." "I liked the book, and you treated us well when you read to us." Also, "I loved the book, and I also love that you read good." But the teacher in me loved their writing, seeing how they spelled words, which may not have been always accurate, but they were phonetically appropriate, and reading their sentences, which had good structure and expressed complete thoughts, as I just read to you. It was truly beautiful. The tie between reading and writing is so clear, and it is so important. Remember, usually the first word you read is your name that you write? So the tie is so important. Literacy really is our foundation to education and to life. When we provide a literacy-rich environment where children can explore and be inspired by books and then express themselves through writing, then I know we are setting them up for success. As a superintendent, I often say, "I'm your very proud superintendent." And so seeing this is one example of why I'm so proud. So I want to thank Ms. McCarthy and all of our staff who celebrate and still a love of reading in our students, not only during I Love to Read Month, but all year round. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Board members, do any of you have reports to share this evening? Director Chester.
Yep. So following Dr. Battle's report, I also read at Ron Elementary for I Love to Read Month. I enjoyed reading to the pre-kindergarten class, Mrs. Richardson's kindergarten class, as well as my daughter Violet's fourth-grade class with Mrs. Hill. So it was a lot of, lot of fun, got a lot of group hugs from the littles. That was like, oh, I miss being able to be a part of that, and reignited my love of Pete the Cat, because I read a lot of that. Secondly, Violet and I attended Class Acts this last week, and it's a joy, you know, I know our teachers are talented, but wow, they are very talented. It was a delight and really appreciated Schmitty and Sons and the bus drivers and their rendition of Wheels on the Bus. It was hilarious.
Highlight.
And then I know we don't have committee reports, but this is more timely because after, when we meet next, these dates will have passed. March is kind of a big day for legislation in terms of being on the Hill with our bills and promoting our legislative agenda. And so just yesterday was AMSD Day on the Hill, and upcoming on March 20th is MSBA Day on the Hill, of which, you know, I will be attending, and we're hoping, you know, if other board members are attending, there are lovely dates set up to meet with our legislators, especially since it's easier for us to meet with them on the Hill than it is to get them to get to a committee meeting. So we want to be sharing our legislative platform and for our community members, this is a great opportunity to continue to engage with your legislators and call them. They love calls, they love emails, emails are probably better to also advocate for our students in our 191 community.
Thank you. Any other? Director Werbe.
I also participated in the Read-a-thon. I read at Ron also to Mrs. Paloma's second-grade class, and they are wonderful little humans because I read to them the book about "I Am a Human," and it was a very appropriate book. It talks a lot about just accepting yourself, accepting other people. It was a wonderful book, and I really enjoyed reading to that class, and they had some very interesting questions. And that's all I'm gonna say.
They do. They always do.
But it was, it was just a pleasure to get to read to them, and I truly enjoyed it. And I'm excited to go back next year for Read-a-thon, so, or another school, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Others? All right, I have a couple of updates. As is the case with some of my colleagues, on Tuesday, February 28th, I had the opportunity to read the book, "The World Needs More Purple People," by Kristin Bell and Benjamin Hart, to Mr. Neff's third-grade class at Ron Elementary. It was definitely a very fun experience, and I loved all the questions the student asked me after I was done with the story. It was great being back in a school, doing that. I was able to do that at two schools this year, and I think it was the first times, definitely the first time since 2020. I think I might have had one in 2020 that was canceled, actually, but it was a great experience, and I was glad to be able to go. Next update, last Friday, March 3rd, I attended my first meeting of the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee. That was a great opportunity for me to learn from the chamber members what their thoughts are on some of the legislation currently being pursued at the state capitol, and also to share with them some of the current priorities we have in 191. So I was glad I was able to go to that. And then finally, my last update is last Thursday evening, I attended the always fun and entertaining Class Acts Teacher and Staff Variety Show at the high school. My wife and I have been going for many years, and it was great that they were able to have it in person this year for the first time since 2020. I think last year, we were talking about this earlier, last year, or not last year, last time they had it in person was the weekend before everything shut down. So, and they acknowledged that during the show, that that was the last time that they had it in person. So thanks to all the teachers and staff who participated, including our wonderful partners at Schmitty and Sons, and thank you to the students who helped with the sound and lighting for the show. It was great, and I'm already looking forward to going again next year. And that concludes my report. So next, we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, the first item under new business is to approve on a first-reading basis, changes to Policy 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches. This will be presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome, Chris.
Hello again, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, Board of Education. I'm here to present to you on a first-reading basis, Policy 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches. This policy, which was presented to the Policy Review Committee and discussed on January 24th, as well as February 28th of this year, governs over student use of, specifically student use of our parking lots and their subsequent vehicles on our grounds. The summary of changes, updates to the Minnesota School Board Association, legal references, as well as some changes in language proposed regarding the fee language, specifically adding language around students who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch will not incur a fee. So what this means is if a student completes the parking registration fee and presents documentation that they are, they qualify for free and reduced lunch, that fee will be waived, and the permit will be issued. So that's all I've got. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, Changes to Policy 624, Online Learning Options Presented by Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. Welcome, Amina.
Chair Hume, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. This was reviewed in the Policy Review Committee, and the history of the policy is that it was written in 2016. And in 2016, we were beginning to see an influx across the state of online learning providers. These were third-party providers, and there continued to be confusion about how to monitor students who were engaged with those third-party providers. And so the two statements that are being revised and removed from the policy on my recommendation is that we're intended to clarify some of those obligations. The language is no longer really needed, since we ourselves are an online provider, and over the past two years, we have entered a different kind of generation of what online learning and what the high quality of online instruction can certainly be. And so I would recommend that we remove those two statements and leave the policy with the other kind of legislative updates within that policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Amina.
Thank you.
And next, we are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, Changes to Policy 714, Fund Balance, and 701, Establishment and Adoption of School District Budget, presented by Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you. Bringing to you first, Changes to 714, as recommended by MSBA. Again, these also went to the Policy Review Committee on February 28th. They're adding the language on page 714.3 under Section 8, pretty much as far as allowing the Executive Director of Administrative Services, that role, to be able to assign funds, balances to different areas, more times not in the case of unexpected expenditures in one area where it may need to be offset from a different area. Just in a sense, moving the money between the unassigned fund balances as needed for different requirements.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
They're both together. They're both together.
They're both together, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I think they're both together.
Okay. We'll do 701 as well. 701, again, is information that is provided from MSBA. The reality is this does reflect current practice and statute already as far as requirements. The first part is the budget information, making sure that that is posted online, that it is available to our public, that the public may request this information as well. If you go to the district's website under Department, you'll see on Finance that it has multiple years of our financials that's been reported, as well as our comprehensive accounting, finance reporting system. The CAFR is no longer called that, they changed the letters around, I don't remember that. Old school, I remember CAFR, as well as our current budget, our adopted and revised, and then what we're proposing moving forward. So that's, that's what's covered under Paragraph D. Paragraph F is when we are updating and moving forward on our levy, local levy certification. We also have to post the information as soon as available for current budget, previous budget, and future budget. And so those are the things that we also post online and make available to our community as well during that process. Outside of that, just minor updates and completion of spelling out the words, if you will. That's it.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
I also moved.
So moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? I just have one. Did you have a? I have one quick question. Point F under the second policy about the posting the link to the district's website, that's required by statute, correct? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
That was my one question. Thank you. So if there are no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, this concludes the regular board meeting. Oh, did I see a point? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not in a hurry, but I jumped, it's right there. The last recommendation we are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis is Changes to Policy 206, Public Participation in School Board Deliberations, presented by Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Hume.
You're welcome.
Yes, this policy came back to the Policy Review Committee for a second review based on conversations, and it was reviewed on January 24th and February 28th. Basically, the changes in the policy, let me go to that. There were two sets.
Want to do it to her? Okay, there you go.
Oh, thank you. At the top of 206-5, in that first paragraph, we changed should to must, and also must provide his or her name, his or her has been changed to their. And then the second change is at the bottom of page 206-5. We had a rich discussion about this. I'll read the language and then kind of talk a little bit more about it. The school board, the recommended language is, "The school board reserves the right to conclude the listening session in the event that audio or video recordings are being made, and when such recordings may present a barrier to participation." And we did have a rich conversation about this, lots of questions, and kind of working together as committee members to try to figure out, okay, where is it, what is it that we want to bring back to the full board for consideration? And we believe that the context for the change is to ensure that the audio and video recordings really do not present a barrier to participation. And I'll open it up to Director Mersal, any thoughts that you wanted to share with the rest of the board as far as that conversation that we had?
Yes, so the purpose is not to really create any sort of conflict or tension, or like the board is doing something outside of its power. And one of the things that we mentioned on February 28th, I saw an example of it tonight, where one of the parents was recording their students. So something like that is, you know, it's... So something like that is, you know, it's, it's fine. You know, we don't want to say, you know, like absolutely no recording. That's not really the purpose. It's just so we don't drive public participation away. So if it becomes a barrier, then we want to maintain the authority to say no. So that's really the whole thing.
And that is, those are the changes. Chair Hume, you already read the recommendations.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any questions or discussion? I'll just take a minute to say thank you to the Policy Review Committee. I think this is a good example of our system working as intended. I appreciate the group taking it back and taking another look, and I feel very good about the revised language in the policy. So thank you to the committee for, for that work. And if there are no other comments, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, this concludes the regular board meeting. We are adjourned at 7:58 to a workshop to discuss open facilities and FY24 preliminary budget update. I think we'll have a, do we need a five or a 10-minute recess?
I mean, sorry.
10, the 10s have it. All right. 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 10 after. Thank you.
Okay. Oh.
Just gonna ask if Aaron is ready for us.
Yeah.
We're on the air.
Yep. All right. Well, I think everybody is back. Welcome back. First up on our workshop this evening is a discussion around open facilities. Stacy and I are gonna kind of lead that conversation. Yeah. So we wanted, do you want to go first? Do you want me to go first?
Would you like me to give the historical background?
Go for it. That'd be great.
All right, I can do that.
We did talk in advance, believe it or not.
Kind of have it scripted out here a little bit.
Perfect.
In October 22nd, 2020, the board adopted a resolution approving an open facilities action plan, which addressed the potential lease and/or sell of Marion W. Savage, Sioux Trail, River Ridge Education Center, Metcalf Middle School, and up to four acres of land at Diamond Head Education Center, all of which were deemed by the district to be surplus properties and no longer needed for those purposes. The resolution then further provided that open facilities would not be sold to, or leased to other organizations that would be in direct competition with the district, charter schools, private schools, the such. Also, the resolution opened up the avenue for special legislation to be proposed to be able to use the proceeds, the net proceeds, from the sale of properties outside of specifically for capital expenses or going back to, back into capital expenses. By IRS regulations, we are required to pay off the bonds associated with those buildings. That, we have to pay the bond. It's just that we're looking for flexibility with the money after that fact. Okay? On August 18th, 2021, the district did sell River Ridge to a private buyer. And also this January, special legislation was introduced and it's currently pending at the Minnesota Legislature. Also, we put in different restrictions on two of our other properties, Sioux Trail and MW Savage, because all of this stuff kind of came together right when COVID hit. So there were a lot of executive orders coming to districts, school districts across the state, to provide childcare, provide nutritional services, to provide a lot of extra support for the community and our families. And so those were carved out at that point in time to make sure that we had space available. Fast forward to 2023, again, we have sold one of the properties. We're looking to update some of the language around the other two that were kind of carved out for COVID reasons. And this is where I turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. So yes, as you said, we, this was approved in the fall of 2020, the current resolution. And so what we want to discuss is the possibility of updating the language to reflect kind of where we are now, two and a half years after the original one was proposed. I think we noticed that, for example, the current language, let me find it, I've got too many tabs open, for the two elementary schools states that, once COVID is no longer a consideration, we will actively work to find non-competitive partners for a lease arrangement of these facilities. So that's, so I think we want to update the language to reflect that, I think, while COVID is still out there, I don't think it's a consideration that we would factor in at this point. And I think we also want to consider, how much do we want to box ourselves into, on how much flexibility do we want to have as a board for whatever options may come up for those, for those schools in the, in the future? Perhaps in the not-too-distant future, we don't know yet. So I think that's kind of where I want to start the conversation, is just where are we as a board around the possibility of changing, updating the language to be more reflective of where we are now and giving ourselves more flexibility with, with what our options might be?
Well, I think it completely makes sense to, you know, to remove the COVID language. To your point, you know, it's unlikely we'll need them as childcare facilities.
Right.
I think, you know, given that the board can take action on this resolution at any point, I would still want to keep the two elementaries as leased facilities until, you know, more information comes forward that would cause us to, to make a change and, you know, make them available to be on the, you know, on the chopping block. And have more conversation about the why and, you know, kind of the same conversation that we had around Metcalf.
I thought we had interest though from the city of Savage because of the remodeling of the, or the reconstruct, the construction of the Highway 13.
The city of Savage is, feel free to step in if I misspeak, the city of Savage is doing a evaluation of their whole kind of downtown, what they call their downtown area, which includes the property that MW is on.
Anus Mike.
Oh, okay. They are, so they're, then they have expressed interest in kind of wanting to know what the status of that site is for possible future development.
So I believe it was a last update, April or May 2021, I'll have to look at it. But the city council of Savage has a comprehensive plan, and in that plan is for the redevelopment of the downtown area. That includes the area where MW Savage is located, based on Mindot's proposal to change Highway 13 in that area.
Right. Yes. So yeah, and I think we, I think the Highway 13, obviously that's, I don't think the city really knows exactly what's going to be changed, but they know that the state is looking into making some changes that could have a pretty significant impact on the whole downtown area of Savage.
Sure.
So I, I just want to make sure, because I thought my understanding was that we did want to make the change for MW, just the, the chance that that was the...
I would be in favor of giving ourselves the flexibility in the resolution to say lease or sale, right?
Yeah.
Knowing that we still, you know, yeah.
And, and at the same time, I mean, so I can, I can understand from a partnership perspective, right? It's, it's showing good partnership with MW, with, sorry, the city of Savage. Obviously, there would be more information that would have to come forward.
Yeah. And I don't know that the city of Savage themselves would be interested in purchasing a building, but...
Oh, no, I mean, no, no. And it wouldn't necessarily be the city. It would be part of their plan.
Exactly.
I don't know. I just feel like it's a little, it, it may, I mean, again, the board can take action on this resolution anytime we want. So if, you know, if administration has, you know, the comprehensive plan and wants to have a conversation about, maybe the city wants to come, you know, present, I don't know. But, you know, I would, I would tend to think, there's really nothing to, I mean, other than the, the distant possibility of something happening, I would tend to keep at least, I mean, people could certainly, you know, if, if there's something from the city or developers that, that needs to come forward, it certainly could. And, you know, we can take action whenever we want.
So developers who express an interest, we tell them the current resolution doesn't have it for sale?
Got it.
So there's no discussion if they do contact us?
Got it.
And we say it's leased?
So we have received inquiries, and we've said at this time, the current board resolution is only for lease.
That's why we may want to consider at least giving ourselves the option. That doesn't mean if we change it, we put a for-sale sign out the next day.
Right, right, right.
But if we get inquiries, we can at least be open to listening.
And this obviously is outside of the legislative exemption.
I think that's an open question. I think it depends on how, what the current wording of the exemption is and if it covers...
It doesn't include. I don't think it includes, I don't think it includes MW.
So we might need to get a different exemption way down the line.
They don't list, they don't list specific properties.
It doesn't list specific properties.
It refers to the, the open facility plan.
Got it. Well, and that's a separate conversation. We don't need to go down that foxhole right now.
Correct.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think...
That's way down the line.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And frankly, it might be good information eventually to have what is still owed on MW Savage or any of the properties and, and, you know, that kind of piece, because then we would understand the, the impact of, of a legislative.
We did get that when we did the purchase agreement from Metcalf. So one would assume if, if and when we do eventually get to that point with MW, for example, we would have, we'd have to have that information. So we would know, are we getting a price that's going to at least retire the debt on that building?
Oh, and then I think, you know, I, I'm in favor of wanting to make, see what our availabilities are. So it's like, I want to open it up where it's lease or sale, and whether that's both elementary schools or just the one, you know, we, I think that could be more of a discussion. So maybe it's lease-only Sioux Trail and lease or sale MW Savage could be how we break it out if we, and when we choose to update this resolution.
Well, and I think, so it makes sense. Yeah. I mean, open it up for MW, because we, there's, there's more in the, you know, more possibility in the, in the distant future that MW, something could happen in the city of Savage. Sioux Trail, I would personally want to hold on and keep at least, because again, we're, we're, we're cautiously optimistic about where we're going with enrollment. We know that it's going to take time, probably 10 years for us to get back to where we were. And there are other things, there's other development happening in the city that could, that, on that side of the city, that could impact the, the need for Sioux Trail.
Including Metcalf.
I was just gonna say.
Including Metcalf, yep, including.
On the Metcalf side, exactly.
I would also say then, you know, open it up for, for MW, and then also look at the four acres of land at Diamond Head and just, you know, take that, the stipulation that the four acres of land may be sold after special legislation has been adopted. I think we can just remove that language and say, up to four acres of land at Diamond Head may be sold. And again, you know, see what, what developers can bring.
That's what I was gonna say. That's what my memory is, when we've talked about, I think maybe we're all still learning in the fall of 2020, and now we've had enough. We know enough now to know that the legislation doesn't affect that piece of property, whether we have it or not.
Right. And it would, it would, you know, like MW could open it up to developers saying, oh, okay, that's for sale. What, you know, what can we, what, what might we do with that? So...
So what I'm hearing, Tony, Sophia, did either of you have anything to add before I summarize?
I just, I'm, sorry, my voice. I personally likes options, so I just say open them both up to sale, lease. But that isn't, because we're not committed to selling. It's just an option.
Yeah, we can always say no, right?
But I do, exactly. We can always say no. And I do believe like Director Alt said, that down the line, if it should come up where we would utilize it again, then that's fine. It's still there. So that's just my input.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments at this point? So what I'm hearing is we do want to give ourselves some flexibility. I think there's still a little bit of an open issue about whether or not to limit Sioux, I like, I kind of, I personally kind of like the idea of definitely lease or sale at MW, potentially just keep it as lease for Sioux Trail. I think I heard a couple of board members say that. We want to remove the comment about the special legislation around the four outlaw, or the four acre outlot at Diamond Head, outlot, outlots, there's two of them. And then update the other language to reflect COVID being past, mostly past tense at this point. Is there anything I've missed?
Would we eliminate River Ridge? Because it's...
Oh, we could probably eliminate River, I mean, we've, we've already sold it. It's been not ours for a long time. So yes, we should probably, we should, that can be removed from the whatever future version we are given. So Dr. Battle, Stacy, does this give you enough information to, with what you need to move forward with bringing something to the board in the...
Let me go through each section to make sure I'm capturing it, and then we would like our legal...
Of course.
Council to review it. So let's look at one. The school board intends to seek or is seeking?
Is seeking.
Probably is seeking, has been seeking, yeah, no, is seeking. Is seeking is...
Is seeking, probably the easiest, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Anything else in that paragraph?
No, but related, well, not for me, but for the special legislation, if we could try and get some clarification on if we change this, does that, does this apply to what's currently working its way through the legislature? Or what's working through the legislature apply to the one that was passed in 2020?
Okay.
That could have a big impact on any future possible sale.
And the other, the other thing too, that we might want to, it is understood that no land and/or building sales or lease agreement shall be executed by the district before legislation authorizing such a transfer has been approved. We want to consider removing that because we're already in process.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did we pass, or do we just think it's, it's our rule, we can change it if we want? Do we pass it? I don't think we passed a separate thing when we approved the, the...
The Metcalf.
I think we...
We did. We had a lawyer bring in a resolution.
Do we have an addendum that we passed to the resolution? Okay.
Not to this. Remember, there's a resolution to the purchase.
To the purchase. So we need, so we need to update this resolution. We need to update this resolution, I think.
So we want to be to ask legal counsel?
Maybe that should be included. Yeah, ask legal counsel what should be.
Yeah. It seems to me that we should remove it, but...
It'd be good to have it reflected all in one document. Yes. Since we still have Metcalf at this point.
Number two, still commitment of this board not to sell to competitor.
Yes, absolutely. 100% bold and highlight.
Big, like 26-point font.
Now, three has four parts. So A, there was some discussion, delete, because it's all about...
Childcare, yeah.
Right.
But you are changing language for Marion Savage and Sioux Trail.
Just MW. Well, Sioux Trail would be leased, MW would be sale or lease to a non-competitor.
So I would, I would say you would have A, and then the next one will replace River Ridge as B.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Marion Savage for sale or lease, that's A, and then B will be Sioux Trail.
Will be leased.
Right, for lease.
Yeah.
Then we can remove the River Ridge comment.
Yeah.
So are, and you're also removing the whole part about the childcare facilities as long as COVID, you know?
Right, right. That whole section is there, or will be. Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to keep C.
Yes.
I think we, I think that's probably the point where we would need to look at the other, the resolution that was approved with the possible sale. And is there anything in that that we need to?
Well, it's may lease, and I, we're still leasing, we're still leasing.
Oh, that's true.
Right. So we want to be able to continue doing that.
All right, never mind.
Now, D, if I strike out part of the sentence, we're left with up to four acres of land at DEC may be sold, period? Or anything else? Remove after special legislation has been adopted.
Yeah.
But it'd be sold to non-competitive partner or organization?
I think that's...
I think that's above.
That's covered earlier.
Well, because it's also stated in C.
Right. It's covered in point two, though, which is before...
It's also, I think it's also part of A.
I wonder why. I don't think, I guess maybe we should change C then, because it's already in point two, it already explicitly says not sold or leased to organizations that would compete.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a little redundant to also have it in the Metcalf paragraph.
Well, it's also in the, in A, like it's, like, we'll actively work to find non-competitive partners for lease agreement.
We just really wanted to make sure that that was clear.
And then again, non-competitive, non-competitive.
Right, right.
I think we need to be consistent, either include non-competitive or...
Yeah.
And then there will be, I'm sure, some legal language.
Probably.
That'll come back. It may look a little different. So four...
With an explanation about the interpretation of those changes.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Number four.
Looks fine to me.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah. That's everything to change.
All right. Stacy, anything else?
What did you decide about?
This for us to take, bring it back. That's why I'm asking Stacy.
No, I, I think I have it. You're, you're willing to continue to lease Sioux Trail, you're willing to lease or sell MW. We're removing Diamond Head, and we're cleaning up some of the language around the outlot, or not Diamond Head, I'm sorry.
Moving River Ridge.
Yeah, River Ridge. And then the, the outlots are the four acres here for Diamond Head. We're removing that portion that says we'll wait for the legislation. That's pretty much where you're stopping.
Yeah.
You still need to do board, a board approval for the sale. So we will, we won't get that far, as far as what we're taking out.
If we get to that point, exactly.
Yeah. But again, we will have legal kind of go through this, try to reflect, make sure that it stays in alignment with both the House file and the Senate file. We don't want to get ourselves into trouble with that, and to try to meet the intentions of what you folks are looking for otherwise. At, at some point also, I, I think we need to revisit kind of a vision forward for facilities and kind of the use with some of the, the places. I just would like to at least have that opportunity to update you on some of the thinking. Part of the reason why we closed schools, because they were small and inefficient and had high overhead cost.
Right.
So moving forward, even if enrollment increases, I don't know if this board or future boards are interested in putting themselves back into that position. There are other options or other ways of addressing this that are operationally less expensive with one-time cost.
Right.
So we might want to explore that as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we talk about a facilities audit that's being done as far as space usage itself?
It, we're, we're, yes, we are looking into, and part of, and that's kind of would also be your first step, quite frankly, is looking at the facilities that are underutilized. We did this also in 2020. Not only did we close buildings, but we reboundried our, our schools to make sure that each of them have roughly around 90% capacity. If we experience growth, your first step, the least expensive step, would be to also go through that process. And where do we need to readjust our boundaries to get our buildings back to the same level? Once you start getting to that place where you no longer can pull those levers, then you're at the position as to what comes next. That's kind of the philosophy or the paradigm in which the board may want to look at going forward.
Well, and I, I, thinking in terms of not knowing when or what that's going to look like, you know, how far down the road that's going to happen, talking about, you know, selling or leasing MW, talking about the Diamond Head outlots, we kind of need to understand the options for, that a future board might have, you know, the one-time costs, for example, right, for, for, for dealing with increased enrollment, so that we can set the next board up for success with the proceeds from whatever sale we do have.
Exactly. And that's the one thing that we tried to reassure the community with during our Metcalf meeting, was that we're not saying that we're going to take all that money and necessarily put it into operations.
Right.
We're just saying we, and again, just like what you're doing right now, we want the flexibility based upon our needs. You still may restrict some of those funds specifically for that. So...
Because hopefully, I mean, ideally, the proceeds would be, if committed, would be adequate to address a one-time expansion, for example, without, you know, without having to go out for another bond. I mean...
It, it depends on what your needs are at the time and the inflationary increases.
But having, but, but the right thing to do is to set that money aside so that, you know, when the time does come, that money could, could be used to offset whatever it might cost.
Right.
Yeah.
It's good to have options.
It's good to have options.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have a budget update.
So tonight, Stacy Silvine, Aaron Tinklinberg, and I will be presenting some new budget-related information and some information for your review, all to help ensure that the board has a good understanding of our overall budget situation. A lot of what I expect we'll spend time on tonight will be around proposals at the state legislature and how they might affect us. So if you recall, the last time I presented budget information for fiscal year 24, I said I was optimistic about our situation. After reviewing some of the proposals currently being considered by the state legislature, I'm feeling much, much more cautious about that optimism. I'm thankful for the proposals around additional funding, including as much as a 5% increase in the general per pupil aid formula and money specifically to address special education and English learner cross subsidies. Unfortunately, other proposals would create new and ongoing mandates that will eat into those increases. One bill that's already been signed will provide universal school meals free of cost to students, and I believe the benefits for students and families will be immense. Unfortunately, the unintended consequence is that fewer families will complete the application for educational benefits, which is what determines how much compensatory aid our district and other districts receive. So initially, when asked about the possible implication, it would be $2 million in lost revenue without having those applications for benefits. At this, after the universal meals was passed in the House and the Senate, there was a proposal to address the compensatory funding formula calculation. And so currently, there's a bill that's proposed. And so we did receive, as well as other districts, new information about the impact. And between fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25, we would still see a decrease of $600,000. And so if you remember last time, we did have, I wouldn't call it a surplus, but we actually had more money in revenues than expenditures. So already, just if it stays as it's been approved, I would subtract $600,000 from that. So there are other proposals that could affect us significantly, including a class-sized mandate, new graduation requirements that would diminish space for student choice, and new unemployment rules that could increase costs significantly, significantly without providing additional funding. And all of this comes in the context of the board's commitment to our work to be a pathways pre-K-12 district, our equity work, as also the class-sized guidelines you have established. So at this point, we simply don't know which of these proposals will move forward, if any. Because of this uncertainty that this causes, I'll be proposing on March 23rd to set aside, I will be asking if you would set aside 1 to 2 million to cover the potential costs when I bring my recommendation later this month. So again, I'm thankful for the support that legislatures and the governor have shown for public schools. But right now, the consequences of this legislative session are unclear, and so we must proceed with caution. But right now, the consequences of this legislative session are unclear, and so we must proceed with caution. And with that, I'll start our presentation. So tonight's agenda, we'll once again go through the budget timeline, some updates. I will share some research themes, one of which you did request at the last meeting about class size. Some other considerations, we'll share these Minnesota legislative session bills that we are closely watching. I would at this time share the ESER allocation that will be a part of my recommendation on March 23rd. Aaron will share the online feedback. Um, oh, then we have again, uses for ESER funding. So we just wanted to clarify what it could be used for. And then our next steps. So the adopted timeline, budget timeline is next. And so at this meeting, we are, who's pushing? Oh, thank you. We're discussing, I didn't have a clicker here. The funding updates in March, and then in March 23rd, I will bring you my budget recommendations. March, April, we will open the survey again. We will have additional feedback gathering for stakeholders. June 8th, bring forth the adopted budget recommendation based on all that feedback and of course, your feedback in March. And then we must have a budget approved by June 30th. So the last board meeting, June 22nd, to have approval. Um, just a review of what we shared before, my strategies for attaining, obtaining a structurally sustainable budget. Mentioned pre-K-12 pathways, your class size parameters, using restricted funds before general undesignated funds, really understanding the ebb and flow of revenue streams and expenses, and then strategically using those federal resources to accelerate learning post-pandemic. Um, research themes. So first, there was a request from the board about class size. And so we are a member district of CARRY, the University of Minnesota Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. And so I always look to them first. It's a wonderful service that our land-grant college, the University of Minnesota, provides. So just to highlight a, a few, um, you, you were given this link, but just to highlight some of what they said, it's not conclusive, conclusive about class size. And so in the 1980s, there was a huge class size study done, the Tennessee Student Teacher Achievement Ratio. And it did show results favorable for class size reduction. And it provided some evidence that smaller class sizes can have positive long-term event impacts. Other analysis were done in a study in 1990 and 2002. And it showed, it did show that class size reduction has larger effects in lower grades. So your elementary grades, K through three, for students with lower socioeconomic status and in the area of reading. More recent analysis has turned to the cost-benefit analysis. As you know, our largest expenditure is for staffing. And so there are fiscal ramifications for altering class size. Studies have found that class size reduction has the smallest positive effect as compared to instructional, some other instructional interventions. And then a researcher by the name of John Hattie actually showed the, the things we put in place that have the largest impact on student achievement. The largest impact, as you know, the most important relationship in any school is between a teacher and a child. And so the largest impact comes from teacher-student relationships, positive, as well as the feedback that teachers give to students. And so wanted to share that. The next largest input is cooperative learning. And so you heard from our elementary principals tonight about how you become a community and a cooperative learning, and also that direct instruction. So that's a summary. And then just for the public, shared the board-designated parameters for class size. Uh, next slide, um, wanted to share, my budget will be looking at the dashboard, the metrics that you have approved for indicators of success. So for example, one of the metrics of success is disproportionality in student discipline. And so my budget will be based on interventions and support staffing networks to reduce that disproportionality as one example. Principals as instructional leaders, I mentioned earlier that the number one factor that we control as a school, because parents are the foundation for all learning for our students. The most important is teacher efficacy and relationship with students. But the second most important in our school contact is the principal. That relationship with teachers to support their instruction, but also the support that principals give to the families and the community. And so that's the second most impactful staffing that we have for student achievement. We're looking at that stabilization of enrollment. You set the enrollment goals we, I presented to you earlier, looking at sustaining more of a cohort from K-1 and 1 to 2 and so on. And then also looking at our capture rate for kindergarteners, even though we know the birth rate for kindergarten due to the pandemic, the, the smaller classes. I will be bringing you a report about Virtual Academy. So that will be on March 23rd. And then really looking at school culture and climate and then operational needs. Some of what you heard a little bit today from Director Rachel Gordon about that need for some operational improvements. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy. We're not going through all of these bills. We wanted to show you the breadth and the depth. What's going on in the hill?
I really shouldn't have created active links for each of them. Is that what you're saying?
Oh, my God.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. So the, the, and, and this was pulled from the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, otherwise known as the AMSD. Folks can go to that website. They do a nice job of consolidating all of the bills, both in the House and in the Senate that specifically could impact school districts. You kind of flip through the, the different pages there. Again, it, it's more for the visual effect as to how many are out there. We do have 136 different bills at the time that we put this together that could impact schools. And, and as Dr. Battle has shared, there is a combination both of additional revenue and additional expenses to the district. And, and some of the different areas that are also included in here will have significant impact on negotiations, student programming, and, and what flexibility that the districts may have moving forward with those. An example, one of the big things that's out there right now, our current contract language with the teachers has five minutes of prep for every 25 minutes of instruction. So that ties in pretty nicely when you have a teacher at the high school would teach five periods, have one period of prep, the other period would be available for supervision. Under the current legislation that's out there, a teacher would teach potentially five periods. And then both of those periods would be pretty much chewed up with prep time. So then we have a loss of supervision and coverage for study halls, different areas. Using the MSBA model to calculate what that difference would be, we'd be looking at adding over 50 FTEs for teachers, which would push us about $5 million just with that one bill alone. So there are some significant items that we need to keep an eye on and as far as how that plays out for us moving forward. Legislative going on, again, kind of the high-level summary, summary as Dr. Battle also shared, 5% tied to inflation. I believe that tied to inflation on the governor's proposal is capped at 3%.
Yes.
Okay. So it isn't unlimited. So even though we may have an inflation increase of 6%, 7%, 8% in the, with the, with the economy, that would still be capped at 3%. We are hoping for increases in the cross subsidies for special education and English language. While we hoped for 100% fulfillment of those, we're not there. So we are getting less than what we had hoped for in those areas. The Teacher of Color Act, Grow Your Own and Come Teach in Minnesota, again, very good, uh, issues moving forward. But at the same time, there's legislation around Pelsby, which limits the ability for those who are coming in under Tier 1 and Tier 2 to have a clear path to move to Tier 3, which Tier 3 is becoming your tenured teachers. Tier 1 and Tier 2, the folks that'll be most impacted by that not being able to become tenured on those pathways will be teachers of color, individuals trying to get into the field. So again, we, we've got a little bit of disconnect on some of the different things that are occurring. And, and the state will have to try to, to reconcile those differences as they move forward. Looking at unemployment for our hourly employees over the summer. That is, we're looking at that cautiously because there isn't much of an incentive to come in and help with our summer school programming if you're going to be able to be paid unemployment over the summer. So that could impact those areas. $25 an hour for minimum wage for hourly employees, again, quite a bit of cost. We have a recognition for longevity within the district and a step system that is pretty standard for most districts. You know, so your first two years may be less than 25, but those that have been here more than probably three years or more are quickly closing in on the 25, if not more. So while $25 may be a minimum wage that's established by the state, it may also find itself being a maximum, which you're going to, because otherwise, you're not going to be able to balance your budget. So again, universal meals, we talked about modifying provisions at teacher prep, we talked about that. Safe schools, again, a good thing to be able to help us. Yeah. Modifying extended time revenue, that one's unclear as to whether that's a benefit or not. Increase to employer insurance. So currently, some of our employees under the family plan received a 70% joint contribution. When I say joint contribution, it, it's looking at the cost of the premium of the insurance plus the HRA contribution. And that is, is negotiated at 70%. The state has language out there where that'd be bumped up to 72%. And at least 50% of the out-of-pocket expenses has to be covered. That side of the equation, we're really good on. The 72% versus the 70% will have an increased cost to the district to move that up. Again, that's taken out of your hands to be able to negotiate that as the state is setting that up. Okay? Out-of-pocket limits, automatic reauthorization of current local levies. That could be beneficial because every 10 years, then you don't have to keep going back to the community and, and bugging them to say, hey, can we maintain the same level of funding that we've always had? Which would be pretty much where we are. That, that, that would also be one of those positives. Also, some of the PELA changes that are in there would be looking at negotiating class sizes or the meetings or calendars, different things along those lines. Again, understanding if you're negotiating class sizes, you're, you're stuck in that bind to where I can't control my cost because you don't, you don't have the lever to adjust your class sizes. And yet then you have the pressure to increase your wages. It, it will put school districts into an awkward bind to try to manage your budgets going forward. So again, we are a long ways away from all of the dust settling on this. But it also explains some of the caution that Dr. Battle is bringing forward.
So moving on to ESER, just a reiteration of the purpose of these funds, relief, recovery, and rebound and those health needs and effective learning opportunities. We wanted to put this out here early because of the requirement for stakeholder feedback regarding the priorities. So this list may look very familiar to you. It is currently how we're using the ESER funds. But you will see that, I think last year, didn't we have a fourth one? Didn't one expire? I can't. Yes, so there's only three. But really, the 3.4 million to supplant current costs and then the same additions that I've made, you'll see the class size reduction in K-1 and 2, as well as Virtual Academy. So we are seeing results, as you heard, through the pre-K literacy. Some we are still working on, such as the DEC Outdoor Classroom for Early Childhood Special Ed and Early Childhood Family Ed. They're visioning.
We're, we're getting close to bits.
Yeah, we're close, yes. So the last update was about the visioning. I'm so stuck on that because I'll have to tell you, I'm from that generation. I don't know how we survived on our playground equipment. That's all I'm going to say. So I just love what I saw for the time.
If you feel the monkey lovers, yes.
I think it was hot and metal.
Woo, hot and metal. Well, okay, so any questions about that? It pretty much is the, it's the same list. We're going to continue. And the total amount is $8,176,000 and some change, $311. I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Okay. Dr. Battle mentioned earlier that we have some input opportunities. After the presentation of proposed budget happens on March 23rd, but we'll, we've also been taking input now. And actually, I should phrase that a little differently. On the front end, we take input. Afterwards, we get feedback. So we have had out there the input survey. As of March 3rd, we had 24 responses. I did check right before I walked in here and we've gotten one more. And the priorities that people listed, and we basically asked people, what would you like the district to prioritize as we're looking at programming and spending? And then also, what efficiencies do you think we should look for? Priorities that have been mentioned the most are additional mental health and behavior support, targeted student supports, some that we already do, but perhaps increasing those as well around EL, social workers and early grades in particular. And then rebuilding performing, performance music programs at the elementary and middle levels. We've added some of those back, but could, could be even stronger in some people's opinions. And that additional answer that we got before tonight was around that same program, so. And then around efficiencies, of course, people suggested reducing administration. And then one person did suggest changing to a four-day school week, which I know some school districts have done in the past. And then that's, next steps for feedback. And we'll push out the input survey still again tomorrow as part of Dr. Battle's 191 update to staff. So the staff have continuing chances to provide some more input. And then after the presentation to the board on March 23rd, we'll open the online feedback survey again to staff and the public so that they can respond and, and let us know their thoughts and reactions to those proposals. And then throughout April and even into May, but I think especially in, in April, school and program-level parent meetings will take place, not necessarily special meetings, but when they have parent leadership meetings, PTO meetings, staff leadership meetings as well. Building principals and, and program directors will be asked to present the information and gather feedback at those times as well. And we'll also schedule in April a community feedback opportunity, a presentation and feedback, just as we did last year at the same time.
That concludes our update.
Thank you very much. Do people have questions at this point? It's a lot of information. Thank you.
I have some question. So do we know what percentage of students now are enrolled in our, in our lunch programs?
The free and reduced.
Free and reduced.
The ones that are eligible for free and reduced. The free and reduced before, you know, it becomes everybody. Do we know?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Do I know off the top of my head? I want to be very careful.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I'm getting two numbers, I think, mixed up. I believe we have a direct certification in the mid to upper 60%. Direct certification would be if you applied for welfare, those programs. And then above that, I believe we have close to another 15 to 20% that may be the ones through application.
But we'll get that to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious. So thanks for kind of just guessing. I didn't expect you to know specifically.
I hope it doesn't come in at 15%, but I think I'm pretty close. I hope it doesn't come in at 15%, but I think I'm pretty close.
Okay. And then if I could, can I make a couple of other
Go for it.
Community comments as far as the school? Okay.
You have the floor. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. They mentioned the four-day week. With that, you have to have, because wouldn't that cut down how many days? Well, yeah, how many days that the students are in school? Because they have to be in school so many days to get federal aid.
So, it's based on instructional hours, not days for each grade level.
I see.
So, if you had a four-day week, it's very, I use the nurse analogy. So, my, one of my first cousins is a retired nurse. So, she worked the 12-hour days. So, yeah, it's
We're not recommending
No, it's a lot to the fore.
But it could be longer.
And I will tell you, one district that did have it for a few years was North Branch. So, there's a lot we can learn from them. So, they no longer have four-day weeks. Yeah, so there's a lot to it, but
I just read something this week, I don't remember where, but about a district that had gone to a four-day week for students, but the teachers still worked five days. So, they had like one full day of kind of planning and prep time, which was interesting.
And a lot of community support, so, yeah, there's a lot of research on that, but it's not something right now I think I'm recommending.
Probably close to a decade ago, we also explored a nine-10.
A what?
A nine-10. So, instead of a four-day week, you had nine days out of 10 that were providing instruction. And then the 10th day would be similar to what you were referring to where the teachers could come in and work. But that way, you don't have quite so much of an increase for the instructional minutes that you would need in a one-week period. So, there's, we've explored some of these options, kind of what goes around comes around.
Well, that was just a question about the, how we, how they would, the finances would be on that. But yeah, no, I don't necessarily agree with that, but the other
Just to be clear, we're not considering that, right?
No, that was just from the survey.
That was just a question.
Okay.
And then the other There's a heavy impact on families by having that decision.
That's why I just want to be very clear, we're not considering it.
Thank you. And the other community question, though, that maybe in some future, you know, some future time, they would suggest maybe year-round schools because year-round, that way you wouldn't have the whole three months of summer at one time. You'd have three months, one month off, three months, one month off. And then for Minnesota, it may work well because your winter months, then you would have a whole gap of the month where you wouldn't have to worry about that bad weather and shutting down and cold weather days and that type of thing. And it wouldn't be so hard for parents that have children that they have to have fine daycare for, for the whole three months at a time. And then people would plan their employment time for the months that the kids are out and go on their vacations then. And, you know, you have more time because it's a year-round type of thing. It wouldn't just be summer. So, just a suggestion that a community member asked me to bring to the board too. And I said, "Oh, sure, I can just bring that and just present it." It's not, and it's not really a presentation, it's just a idea. I'm just sharing that idea.
I've had personal experience with the nine-three. I can tell you, as a leader of a middle school in that type of a program, there are a lot of upsides and there are a lot of logistics to still think through.
Sure.
Targeted services, your professional development can happen during your three weeks off. So, you're not looking for subs. You're also not needing late hours for students to stay after school. You can get all those extended hours during that three-week period. And you have four times where you get to come back to school feeling like it's the first day of school.
Exactly.
It's all over again because the kids come back, the staff come back, everybody comes back very refreshed and ready to go again.
And I too have experienced, my son went to a year-round school for middle school.
And then the children don't have so much time to get in trouble or get bored for three months out of the year all at one time. I just thought it was a good suggestion. I also, when I lived in California, experienced that they had year-round schools. And there was a lot of pros to it. I'm sure there's some cons too, but, so, anyway, so I'm just throwing that out there.
So, you did your due diligence.
Yes, I did.
Community member.
Did that community spread on that community presentation or question or proposition? Okay, and then the last thing I have is just something I wanted to share with you, board members. Just, just a communication I want to share with you. So, my fellow board members and direct, school directors and superintendent Battle, I'm speaking on a concern as a member of the school board regarding the agenda on January 12th when we were talking about the school board stipend. It was an item that was discussed and I didn't really get a chance, I think, to properly state my whole concern about, about the stipend. And so, this, I'm just putting out as just a, like I said, a communication. I'm not stating this to, to change anyone's mind. I'm just putting it out here as a concern and as another way of looking at, at it.
At a time when we're doing budgeting.
At a time when we're doing budgeting. Thank you. Before the midterm election, I asked several people living in our district, most with children in the school, if they would like to run for the school board. This was during the midterm, you know, when, yeah, before, you know, in two years ago, or a year ago, I'm sorry. And represent our community of children because I won't be on the school board forever. So, I said, so of course, they asked me, "What were the duties and responsibilities?" And I told them, I said, I told them the hours and I told them, you know, but mainly, serving on the school board is a privilege, you know? It's, you should be, feel entitled to do this because you're representing the community. I explained that it can be many hours of reading and budget reports and meeting agendas and several emails daily, school policies, depending on what committees you're on, serving on community committees, plus some public obligations. And then the first thing they asked me, "Well, how much does it pay?" Well, then I informed them, "Well, not much." But, so they looked at me surprised, like, you know, okay, I'm kind of, when I told them, because I did tell them a number. And they kind of looked at me with surprise and a little empathy. And they said, "You do all that for that?", was the most common remark I got back from like the eight families I asked. And then I explained, "But it's for our children and they need representation. They need to see mirrored, just like in school for the teachers of color that we're trying to recruit. We also need that on the school board. That was part of the reason why I ran." But, so, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Oh, and that is why I wanted to run for the school board. I saw this need and this is the reason why I did it. So, most parents empathize, but with passion and commitment, they still kind of said, "Well, I work two jobs," this is what a lot of them said, "and I can barely make ends meet. It sounds like another time-consuming job with a lot of responsibility and very little pay." And I stated, "Well, it is." Most of the parents I talked to claimed that they needed to spend that little time that they had with their, from their work, their jobs, with their children. And I claimed I know and I understand very well. Luckily, I am at a point in my life where my children have graduated and I don't have a spouse, he's deceased, and so I have time, even though I'm one person and have another full-time job. So, I do understand how it is when you have a family. So, what the board should know is just with all the statistics and graphs and charts that are presented on reduced and free lunches and one-parent households and state test scores, that families are disproportionately disadvantaged due to income and jobs and language barriers and sometimes post-education levels. So, this is a large part of our mission and our goal to our children to be represented, not only in schools, but on the school board. We want, if we want to help change this pathway in their learning techniques, we need to provide our students with all the skills and help to conquer these barriers in our community with representation. Every child matters. Every child should be represented, not only in the schools, but on the school board as well. So, as I mentioned in January meeting, we talked, I talked to families about the stipend and unfortunately, my point and concern is that we just keep in mind that there are families that would love to serve, but just are not able to because it is, we're just not offering enough. We can't ask families to volunteer because this is really not a volunteer position. We should value ourselves more than that. And I think my only other point I wanted to make was if, since we're talking about our budget, at next year in January, if we should decide that we want to increase the stipend back to what it was, not increase it above anything, we're not giving ourselves an increase, but just to put it back what it was before you changed it in 2018 because of the reasons that you stated, I really just think some families would be willing maybe to take it a little more into consideration. So, I'm only one person. I have a passion and loving concern for children and the community so that they can grow up to be world leaders. And so, I just hope that every family can be represented and we just keep that in mind and keep that all families need to be, that exist in this community. And I just thank you for your attention. And that's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Are there other comments or questions about the budget at this point?
Thank you, yeah, I do. So, just clarification, Dr. Battle, on the one to two million set aside that you mentioned in light of all the bills that are out there and being considered. That's the total set aside expressly because of those bills? Is that what you're saying?
We don't know the ongoing costs or the mandates.
Yep.
And as the examples we gave, if they are passed and signed into law with the governor's signature, there are financial implications. And we, I want to make a recommendation so we're not caught off guard or scrambling. So, just to have that just in case.
And is that a roll-up of an estimate of what could likely pass? I mean, I know there's 136 bills, so, you know, having a crystal ball to be able to predict, but like, how would you come up with?
If all the bills pass, they can't afford all of it. So, they're, they're going to go through a filtering process. And so, there's a lot undecided. So, like I said, it's so much uncertain. I just didn't want the board to be caught off guard and not knowing that staff and I are really thinking about what if.
And presumably, I guess, I mean, we don't even know when the budget will be passed. But if they don't need a special session and they have it passed by May, then presumably, the one or two million you're talking about would be in like the presentation at the next board meeting. But by the time we actually approve the budget in June, we would know where that one and two million dollars is going to end up.
So, for example, I mentioned the universal meals. So, if they do pass the proposed bill to recalculate, to change the formula for compensatory ed, I was at the AMSD Day at the Hill yesterday. I heard from two legislatures that the legislators, that the author was looking at amendments, the whole district's harmless for a year. So, then that $600,000 would come off at least for fiscal
For one year.
Well, for, right.
Not for the next year.
So, a lot of things to be decided. So, I'm closely watching the few we mentioned here because we know they have significant financial and as our legislatures and governors finalize, we'll keep adjusting.
And at 9:17, board meeting on Tuesday, this was something that was highly discussed amongst the member districts. And the representative from Bloomington Public Schools was stating that they were, at their legislative committee, when they were, because they were at AMSD on the Hill yesterday, were bringing to their legislators the cost impact to their districts of if there's not a compensatory, if we're going to lose out on compensatory, this is what it's going to cost our district. And then I think there was something also related to the $25 an hour in unemployment too in terms of that impact on the district as well, their district. And, and so, thinking about us, and when they were talking with their legislators, what, there's so much they didn't understand the connection to compensatory and free and reduced lunch. And so, that, so, so we have an opportunity when we're talking to our legislative to educate them that they're connected and this is the impact that this will have on our district along with all the other school districts in the state. And therefore, we want to support this and you need to have an alternative plan where the districts do not lose out on their compensatory. So, what is that other measure?
Unintended consequences of very good legislation potentially, but there's other consequences to it.
And I think in terms of, you know, not to, you know, go into a legislative committee conversation, but we all have the opportunity to advocate to our legislators. And if we have, you know, two or three, and Dr. Battle, I don't know, you know, what kind of numbers you, you all might have in terms of, you know, like I wrote down, the prep time, Stacy, you had said would come in at about $5 million. We have $600,000 for the compensatory question. You know, what might it cost for the, if the $25 per hour passed for summer? Those three pieces of information to remind our legislators that, yes, we appreciate, you know, the, the funding that has been set aside for education and there are, there are implications and strings to, just to list those three, in addition to the fact that there are unfunded mandates throughout. I mean, I did actually, I'm a geek, I looked at, I looked at every single one of them. And there are unfunded mandates embedded in those bills and it made me really worried because, yes, there's a lot of really well-intentioned bills. And, you know, in spirit, absolutely, you know, there's, there's a good reason for that bill to come forward. If it doesn't have an appropriation associated with it, I've got, I, we, our students have a problem. So, I'll get off my soapbox. That was just one thing I wanted to remind us all of, that advocacy to our legislators individually or in person is always a good thing.
Yep, it's key because they don't always know the full picture because
And even And even the, the committee chairs, like if you're following where the bill is, emailing the committee chair, "Look, this is what, what you're considering. This is its implication for, for our school district." So, it sounds like we may, depending, is it possible that based on input and feedback that the recommendations that are presented at the end of March might change between March and June?
Oh, yes, that's why we have the several feedback sessions.
Okay. So, then we would have another workshop.
So, for example, last year, remember when we had the public meeting? We had several middle school parents and parents of wrestlers that wanted me to add wrestling to my middle school. Initially, I had not included middle school wrestling, so, yes, I just, based on feedback.
So, then I'd like to ask, if that's going to happen, we need to have another workshop to review and before that final budget document comes forward, the first meeting of June.
Makes sense.
Specific questions, slide 12. Refresh my memory, why we're reducing class size in Virtual Academy with ESSER funds? Because my, my recollection is that class sizes in Virtual Academy are pretty small.
At this point, yes, they are, but Virtual Academy still is one of our schools. And so, we have a maintenance of equity. So, we have to maintain the same amount of federal funding compared to general funding to different types of program. There's, there are guidelines that you just can't suddenly carve out or isolate certain schools that do receive types of funding and not
So, even though it doesn't need a class size reduction, we must, in order to maintain equity, is what you're saying?
In this, as far as the class size reduction, I mean, we are maintaining class sizes and to your point, they are already small. So, we may code our kindergarten, first grade teacher to ESSER, which has a small class size.
Got it.
Where second, and then your third, fourth or fourth, fifth grade, second, third, third, fourth would be out of the general fund.
Got it, okay.
So, again, this goes back to kind of the policy thing to where we can kind of play around with how we're coding these things to address all of that.
Okay. And I appreciated the class size reduction for the, what was it, K1 and 2? That makes, that, that, that That makes, that, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. And I guess, you know, in terms of class size overall, number one, it's already a bill. So I don't know that we necessarily need to consider it. I think based on the research, they're probably, there, I'm hearing there are better ways to invest our money and we are already doing that in a focused way. And I trust Dr. Battle, based on what you shared tonight, you're already looking at that, at, you know, okay, how can we give social emotional support, you know, that academic support and intervention based on remediation? Sorry, just checking to make sure. Yeah, and I guess just, just wanting to encourage you, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, you know, making sure that, you know, whatever amount of money we, whatever funding we receive, that isn't already earmarked before it even arrives. You know, focusing on how we're really serving our students and, you know, academically, socially. Because we know the pandemic hit hard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other, anything from this side of the table?
Just because she's speaking.
I don't have any additional specific questions. I do think it's, it's hard to know at this point, given just all the uncertainty at the legislature, 100, however many bills. We might be having a very different conversation even a month from now. I mean, we just don't know until, because so many things are being discussed and considered, it could go one of 100 different directions. And I know this is part of how the proverbial sausage is made every year. There's just more of it this year, which is a good thing. But it also creates a lot of uncertainty as far as where we are and where we're going to end up when the legislation, when the legislature adjourns. I think it's May 22nd, I believe. So, late May. So we'll, we'll know more, I'm sure each couple, every week or two, we'll probably know a little bit more between now and then. And we'll see where we end up. So are there, last call for questions? Do you need anything more from the board at this point to keep moving forward in anticipation of the 23rd?
Join me on the Hill on the 20th.
I wish I could, I have other obligations that.
Dates with senators and representatives have been set.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that. All right, then we are adjourned for the evening at 9:20.
I am texting Jamie right now.